Okay, so at this time we'll be called to order the regular meeting of September 6th, 2016. The time is now. Uh, six, seven, seven forty something. Seven forty one something?
Sorry.
Seven forty one, right, so down. If you please stand up.
... Like the United States and America. To the Republic, which stands on condition under God, into this one where we can justice thrall.
Okay, 1.07 is the student report. It's a maybe you have, I'm Jeanne Thomas. If you would, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeanne Thomas. I'm a student at Rockland High School. Uh, there are, there are tons of funding going on at the high school. This week, from September 19th to the 2030th spirit week, and it ends up with homecoming on Saturday. So yesterday, the day was college parrot day. And during dinner lunch, we had college students present, and a lot of seniors and underclassmen were interested in doing that. Uh, today was Southern Spirit Day, and there was a club expo where fifty clubs came out and showed what they were doing, what they were representing during dinner lunch. And many of the students are in spirit and versed in Martin Luther. Uh, tomorrow is We Believe One Day, and where students dress up in red, white, and blue and show their faith in Jesus. And Thursday is Jersey Day, where students wear their separate jersey from a sport or they wear their favorite sports team jersey. And during unit lunch is extended lunch, where there'd be inflatables outside, snuggle machines, popcorn, all kinds of things. And so last day on Friday is Pass Color Day, where there's many events going on, like team handball tournament, and the various anticipated pepper outlets between the streets. The spirit cup will be also awarded on that day. Homecoming football game will be against North Rockland that Friday, and homecoming is on that Saturday. Uh, tickets will be sold during this whole week, during dinner lunch by the USO, state government, for $20, and the theme is all around the world in one night. Uh, Thursday is Senior Parent Night by Vaidance at 7:00 PM. Uh, the 27th is Financial Day, our night also sponsored by Vaidance. On October 1st is the SATs offered at the high school. And the second back to school, like with last night, and there's tons of parents coming out, talking to their teachers, their students, their daughter, sons, teachers, and getting information. And your book is always available for sales or advertising in this condition. Thank you.
To be a high school student this week. That's not great. Thank you so much. All right, 1.08 minutes for the regular meeting of September 6th, 2016. Chair and its motion to accept those minutes as those stated. Warren? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in attendance? Uh, superintendent's comments?
You go at this side.
Public participation, this is public participation as to action items only. Those are the items listed behind me, 2.01 through 2.10 possibly. Through 2.10, this session will last thirty minutes, three minutes per speaker. Please step up to the microphone, speak clearly, address your comments to the president of the board. Again, pursuant to policy, no discussion or specific comments regarding any district personnel or policies to our forward 1432. Action item is four. Okay, seeing none, process portion of the meeting. All right, action items. I don't really question anything to be pulled, right? Something to be pulled, excellent. So, please consent agenda with respect to action items 2.01 through 2.10. Chair and its motion to accept those as those stated. Warren? Armani? I just came here for the... All right, Armani and Warren, you got some answers or come around? Okay. Anything? No. Right? Warren? Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opinions? Three point... Okay, that's ready for the first one, 3.01, just to be each other's new language.
Terran, are you ready?
Leading.
Leading. All right, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Terran Rivera. I have the privilege of being your supervisor of elementary social services. I'm here tonight to share a presentation with you on English language learners on our district. I'm joined by a couple of members of the E&amp;L team. I have Ee Justino from Viola Elementary, Nancy Reddery, Southern High School, and Catherine, I call her Katie, Catherine Mercury from Montevello Elementary. So before we dive in, we have a really great presentation created with a lot of information. There are a ton of acronyms, and the state keeps changing them, and I'm pretty sure it's the state who paying attention. It's a bit confusing. Um, so I'm gonna briefly go through some of them, and these are not all of them, but just so that we're sort of speaking the same language. Um, ESL refers to English as a second language, it's a term used to describe students. LEP, Limited English Proficiency, means the same thing as ESL student. A psych student is a student with interrupted formal education. L is the more commonly used term, it's an English language learner, that's someone that you probably heard more frequently. And a newer one, EB, is emergent bilingual, that's one that we're hearing the state is moving towards. The other acronyms toward the right are ones that actually refer to the service and the teacher. So E&amp;L is English as a language, but we sometimes refer to teachers as E&amp;L teachers. And TSL, this one is not cool, it's Teachers of English of Second and Other Languages. And now teachers are also referred to as TSL teachers. Can I test you? Okay. So how does one get this designation? Who is an L? How do you become an L? So there are two different ways to, that you can become an L, two different types of Ls. You can be a simultaneous bilingual, so that means that you are raised here in two languages, a native language and another language at the same time, and each language builds a cognitive language. You can be a sequential bilingual, which means that you generally heard one language or native language, and you later on at some point have another language introduced, okay? With either one of these, you're trying to acquire language, two languages or more at the same time.
We wanted to share some facts with you about English language learners, otherwise no results. If you take a look at the first bullet, you might find it interesting to know that there are more than 215,000 English language learners attending school in New York State, and of those, 61.5% were born in the U.S. And in 2014, only 3% of Ls in grade three through eight achieved proficient scores on the New York State ELA exam. Did you know that there are over 175 different languages spoken by Ls in the New York State? We have a very diverse group of English language learners here in Rockland Central District. And as you can see by the slide, these are the various languages that are spoken by our students. And as our school year continues, we want to add more languages to this list. And a majority of our students are Spanish-speaking Ls, although they do come from various countries. Um, since they come from these various countries, sorry, since they come from these various, these various countries, they speak different dialects of Spanish. Here we have the total number of Ls in the past ten years in our district. And as you can see from the chart, the numbers have been steadily increasing. And this year, our numbers are at our highest. And they are still, and there are still students who are continuing to enter our district and students who are still being screened. And if we take a look at this chart here, here we have a breakdown of that scope focusing in from 2013 to 2016. And in just three years, our numbers have increased by almost 100 students, as you can see in the first row. If we take a look at our new Ls, these are our students that are entering the district, and those numbers have increased as well. But when we take a look at our tested out numbers, we notice that in 2016, the numbers have decreased. And this may be due to the fact that these students are coming in with little to no English, and they're just not ready to test out of the program. I know some of you might be thinking, well, how do I identify a student as an English language learner? And here's how. According to the New York State regulations, CR Part 154, the screening process begins with the home language questionnaire. Once another language is checked off on that questionnaire, the student will go through a series of interviews as well as the family to obtain more information. If the E&amp;L teacher determines that there may be difficulties with the English language, the student is given the NICATEL, and this is our New York State identification test for English language learners. This test provides their proficiency level, and those proficiency levels determine how much service hours they will receive.
Thank you. As far as those service hours are concerned, this, and this is determined by the state, this is determined by CR Part 154. The students will receive anywhere between 550 minutes per week down to 90 minutes per week. That service can come in various types. Standalone service is the teaching of the language of English by an E&amp;L teacher. Integrated services combine an E&amp;L teacher with a content area teacher so that the students are more focused on the content of what they are learning. As the students become more proficient, those numbers change a little bit, and there's some flexibility in how much standalone, how many standalone minutes, how many integrated minutes. The exit strategy is determined by the NICATEL test that is given in there. That is how they exit. When they exit, however, it's good to know that they actually still receive testing modifications, they get extended time, stuff like that for two years. Now, the types of proficiency, language proficiency are two. This is for anybody learning a language. BIS, Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills. How much is that right five-speed humming? Oh, no, I can't afford that. It's how much is the sandwich? How do I get from Southern train station to New York City? It's basic communication language. CALS, however. CALS is High Level Academic Language Proficiency. This takes a long time. This is the language of school. This is where, these are words like quotient, this is words like mitosis, this is a word like analyze, define, determine, multiply. It can take anywhere between five and seven years for students to become proficient in CALS, and that is what they are tested on when they take NICATEL test every spring. That is why sometimes it's hard to get to test out of a L status. Now, these are the five levels determined by New York State. It's been switched a couple of years, these are the five levels. Entering, emerging, converging, transitioning, expanding, or expanding. I'd like to ask anybody in the room, where do you think most of our students fall? In which one of these categories?
When they first show up?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not when, not when they first show up. Uh, last year's results, when we tested all of our students with the NICATEL test. In what level do you think most of them landed? I'm just asking, see if there's anyone wants to. Are you a virgin?
I'm a virgin. Yeah. Transitioning.
I do. Well, you can see that most of Rockland Central students fall in the expanding range. I want to point this out, at the elementary level, most of the students are in expanded followed by transition. At the secondary level, most of our students are emerging followed by transition. Part of that again is that secondary count language is much more probably difficult than the elementary count language. So that's where our students fall. And finally, from my end, what I just want to make sure we understand is that our students are coming to us with needs that are perhaps different than what we have. Many of our students have traditions and cultures where we can't figure it out. They are told to not look at an adult because to look at an adult is an insult. So when we're asking our kids to look at us as we speak and try to teach them to pronounce, they don't know what to do because they're told not to look at the adult, yet we're standing there asking them to look at the adult. Many of our students, especially at the high school level, have come into our country without a parent or a guardian. These are unaccompanied minors who are now living in the village of Southern without parents or guardians. The trauma these students have faced is vast, and these are just things that we have to be aware of as we are teaching our students.
So, as I'm sure we're all aware, the population of Rockland Central is definitely changing. Uh, we're welcoming more and more families from other countries. Uh, as you can see from any side, our numbers have been going up, and have our responsibility as districts to teach these students and provide them an education in a leadership and environment, and with the best possible programs that are available. Um, a lot of these students are coming to us with limited education. Um, maybe they haven't had the support that many of our families that were born and raised here have, and they're not familiar with our education styles. So, the question is, what are we doing as a district to meet these students where they are and to accommodate them and to do the best possible job to be able to teach them? Um, and so here's what's going on. So as far as professional development, we hired obviously more non-teachers because we have to. We have to provide them their service minutes. Um, we hired a bilingual leading on teachers. As far as PD, professional development, um, I'm sure you all heard mention of Lucy Hawkins and the Years and Writers Workshop. So many of our teachers have attended training at Columbia into the city on how would that be a study to teach these English language learners, how to make it work for them. Um, we also provided PD within our building, so the E&amp;L teachers have been responsible for providing our own PD to their colleagues. That's part of the mandate as well. And then we went to instructional support. Probably a coaching, there's gonna be a coach that's gonna come and work with us with their teaching that Terran has set up. That will all kind of come into place very soon. Um, consultants, we have some new, uh, computer programs and technology, for example, Imagine Learning. It's a language and literacy support program that accelerates learning of English. It has bilingual component, it has reading and literacy points, and our readers will be changing on that program very soon as well. Um, so it's really important that we are proactive as districts, really taking some counter-changing population. And part of that includes digging ahead of bilingual education. And that's really important because the mandate says that if you have 20 or more students in grade level, in addition, we have to provide some type of bilingual education for them. So the beginning steps of that process is really to study how a bilingual panel, which would consist of teachers, administrators, parents, a variety of people that we meet together approximately four to five times a year and to talk about what this program will look like, how it will be sustained, and any impacts that may have on the district. So that's kind of the stage we're at now. And then that kind of leads me into a really great opportunity this is creating for our district, and, um, I feel very actually about this. There's been so much research that has been put together on the bilingual brain and the benefits of a person who is able to speak more than one language. Um, there have been advantages in mental health, there have been studies that have done on job performance, college readiness, all kinds of studies. And I just want to talk a little bit about what the research says. For a long time, there was this conception that if you were learning two languages at one time, it would in some way create a deficit or delay a child. And more recent studies have shown that this effect is not the case. Um, there's all kinds of studies that have been done that show that babies in fact, they have the ability to compartmentalize and to actually differentiate between two languages from birth on. So, early exposure to two languages does not in any way have a negative impact on the student. In fact, it's the opposite. Um, second language, learning a second language increases productivity. There's been all kinds of scans and studies that have proved that. Um, and as an adult, adults who speak a second language have better opportunities in the job market. There's even studies that show that, I know I believe it was Rosetta Stone did study the increased income and salary are higher for individuals who speak more than one language. So all the evidence will be such as there. So not only are we obligated to provide bilingual education with our changing population, but we're also providing our students with gifts. Because this could really be the difference between a student that has no college job or still a non-college job and, you know, the ability to support, maybe their families support, and have opportunities that, you know, prior generations never had. So with that.
So in conclusion, one language sets you in a order for life. So languages open every door along the way. We hope that you enjoyed our presentation. Um, as a team, we see our Ls as students that are very valuable gifts. We hope that we showed you that today. If you have any questions, our information is here, our emails. If you're free to get models or cashes back or have any questions.
Oh, yes. Thank you very, very much. It was a great presentation. And I, I agree with the, I know somebody whose children actually speak English and Italian, and there's nothing more amazing than seeing a three-year-old speak English. With a native accent, with a American accent. But listen, it means Italian, but you would, you would be able to tell. It's truly amazing. I appreciate all the feedback you've given. I don't know if any board members have any questions with respect to the presentation?
Slide question, question is not really... Thank you again, it's awesome. And I totally agree with the research. So, um, on the chart, you know, increasing enrollment of the non-students, you explain that students not admitted into this data program. Can you just clarify half last sound, why the numbers are lower?
Yeah, this is, this is the slide?
Yeah.
So, um, what we saw was that the patterns, you can see the numbers have decreased, and the number of Ls coming in keeps increasing, and the number of new Ls. Um, so the ones that are already designated as Ls and the new Ls keep increasing. However, each year, you can see the numbers more or less were in the thirties, you know, were close to the thirty range. And then this past year, there was a drop. So there's a couple reasons for that, you know, we're, we're sort of speculating as to why this happened. Um, part of it is that there has been a change to the test. That's a fact. The test has gotten more difficult in terms of aligning more than four. So it's, it's more difficult to test out of this exam. And also, um, it depends on, as I mentioned in the beginning, I had mentioned there are sequential Ls and there are simultaneous Ls. A piece of that is, aren't the students that are taking this exam students that just came from another country? As opposed to the data from previous years where these are students that might have been tested that have been here for a few years? So that could be the difference in that number.
I have a question on that. They have options to test out annually or after accomplishing certain count?
Yes, they take the NICATEL.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You want to next one? 3.02. This will be every quarter, pre-kindergarten.
As far as I'd like to make it E&amp;L team for their wonderful presentation. We're gonna talk a little bit about pre-K tonight, and I'm gonna be joined by Jackie Bodnar and Renee Dawson, both from Viola Elementary School. I want to thank Jackie and Renee for their enthusiasm and focus on this topic. We've been talking about it for quite about nine months now. And they've been part of a lot of the conversations, so thank you both for joining me tonight. So this is kind of a little trip on, a little history of pre-K. Talk about how it's currently done, and now we're gonna talk a little bit about what could be in our future. I do want to emphasize that this is sort of visionary, this is not operational. So we don't have any answers to any operational questions right now. This is really to share a vision and to see, really give you an opportunity to think about it. So our current pre-K process involves any parent of a four-year-old child applies for pre-kindergarten through Childcare Resources. I'll talk a little bit about Childcare Resources on the next slide and all that they do. But there's an application process. When pre-K first started, eighteen or nineteen years ago, there was an income component to it, there no longer is. So it's open to anyone with a four-year-old child. Parents fill out the application through Childcare Resources. Childcare Resources then collects all the applications, checks residency, checks immunization, checks all the things that they're supposed to check. And then puts the kids into a lottery for pre-K. And the reason they get put into a lottery is because, um, the state gives us a grant that covers universal pre-K for 95 students. That's our district allotment is 95 students. We're now currently in our third year of an additional statewide grant that allows for a full-day pre-K for 20 students. And we have determined that we prioritize that full-day UPK for 20 students who come from low-income homes and have limited English proficiency. So those are both state grants. The first one is the one that everyone gets, the second one is one that we specifically apply for a bit of assistance of Childcare Resources. And then in addition, we use some of our federal Title I grant funds to supply additional UPK spots. Because of the way our Title I program is set up with Connor and Sloughsburg being our only Title I schools, that money can only be used for students from Connor and Sloughsburg. But what happens is by using that money, it opens up some of the spots in the original 95. In doing this, for the last three years, we've been able to provide a pre-K placement for every child who applied in the district. So for every child that completed the application or his parent, or whose parents completed the application, for the last three years, we've been able to supply, to provide UPK placements. All of those UPK placements are in what we call community-based organizations. And you're familiar with many of them. YB Dings, Sloughsburg, YB Dings, Southburn, Sacred Heart, Kinder Care, those all count as community-based organizations. In addition, with the Title I money, we do provide some additional services, and these, again, are to support language acquisition. But those aren't placements. I mentioned Childcare Resources, I want to go back to them for a minute. Childcare Resources is a nonprofit organization in Rockland County. It provides a shared service model, it serves seven, I think just here in Rockland administering UPK. East Ramco chooses to administer their own UPK. All the other districts use Childcare Resources. And they literally do super jobs, Alpha to Omega for UPK. They do the contracting with the sites, they do the contracting with the districts, you approve... approved many of their contracts recently. They do all of the marketing and recruitment, and that goes both ways. They do the marketing and the recruitment of the UPK providers. They also do the marketing and the recruitment for the families. They go around, their application process starts in January, they go around in February, they hold meetings all over the county. They consistently in our district, Oakmont and Connor, they advertise it, they bring families in to make everyone aware of the program. Then they also do the program administration. So they do all the paperwork with State Ed, they fill out all the grant applications, they do all the communicating with State Ed, they visit the actual sites, they send their specialists in, they do the monthly visits to the sites, literally they do soup to nuts. They do have a very significant expertise in the area of early childhood education. This is, this shows a little history and our current situation with UPK participation. If you look at the bottom first, where I have the last three years where I mentioned that we were able to provide a UPK placement for every child that applied. These are the numbers, just for interest, I've included the kindergarten size of the kindergarten plus the following year and a percentage of participating students participating in UPK. Prior to that, we had been using, we didn't have the statewide grant, the statewide grant started, the full-day grant started in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, that's the first year it's available. So there was instantly, we were able to add twenty more kids there. In the prior three years, we did use Title I funds, but our Title I allotment was significantly smaller. We had an increase in Title I starting in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And so there wasn't quite enough funds, there were also more applicants in those years as the incoming kindergartens were up there. So we've got, we've been able to go from forty percent of students being serviced through pre-K to fifty-six percent. This year, every child that applied again has been offered a placement. Sometimes people don't take the placement, but it is offered. And this is our enrollment for this year, you'll see on the big chart includes, it includes our highest participation placements, but it also includes the ones that are within our district with conception of campus foundation, which is one at RCC, which is very close to being in our district. So these are our local ones and have our highest enrollment. We do have several kids, because Childcare Resources is a shared service, a child can actually go to UPK anywhere in the county. And it counts, any site that is a UPK site for any district of the seven districts in the county, they can go there. So while, you know, people may choose one close to their work or whatever. And so that's why some of them are a little further away. I talked a little bit about full-day versus half-day. The full-day UPK program, the requirements are that it's at least five hours plus lunch, and there are eighteen students, a teacher, and a name. The class size may increase to twenty, but if it increases beyond eighteen, a second name needs to be added to the class. For a half-day pre-K, which is with the exception of the full-day grant, all other children are placed in a half-day program. It's two-and-a-half-hour program, eighteen, with the same ratio, eighteen students to one teacher to twenty. Last spring, we did a survey and we asked families of current kindergarteners and current pre-K families. So this was given in June to families that kids were finishing pre-K going to kindergarten and kids were finishing kindergarten and going to first grade. And we asked parents a few questions and ninety-four percent of the parents who answered their child had attended pre-K, with fifty-seven percent being participating in UPK. For those children that were not enrolled in pre-K, which was a small number, you can see there were nine responses, half of them were either home with a parent or home with another family member. We also asked the question about wraparound care. What wraparound care means is they have before care, after care. So there's pre-K where someone, a parent, a grandparent drops a kid off for two-and-a-half hours, picks them up two-and-a-half hours later. We have other facilities like a kidder care or a daughter, where the children can stay all day, there is UPK for two-and-a-half hours within the day, but the before and after are what parents pay additionally for, and that's what the word wraparound care refers to. So we asked parents about wraparound care. And sixty percent of the parents who responded to the survey said they did not use wraparound care. We also asked parents about how satisfied they were with their child's preparation. So the first question asked if the, if parents felt the child was prepared for kindergarten academically, ninety percent answered yes. And asked, when asked if they felt the child was prepared for kindergarten socially and emotionally, again, ninety percent answered yes. In terms of the question, did they feel that they had pre-K options locally that met their needs, only sixty-four percent of parents responded yes. All right. Which brings us to a little bit more about pre-K, went by Jackie and Renee.
No, I'm out of shape, so I can't cut it. So, well, come on.
Okay, so why preschool? Research in neuroscience indicates that eighty-five percent of brain development occurs by age three and ninety percent occurs between birth and age five. Language proficiency is a key predictor of school success. Children benefit from engaging in rich vocabulary through literature and conversations with multiple exchanges back and forth. It increases oral language and vocabulary development for speaking, listening, and comprehension.
Student understanding of letter and sound relationships along with rhyme may also improve the writing skills for kindergarten. When students enter kindergarten without the writing skills, students are already behind. As we have heard in the last presentation, our real population is grown and students who have this higher knowledge, educated are with the foundation skills in place. A large and growing body of research show that investing in high-quality pre-K education yields benefits for children, schools, and communities.
Pre-K offers valuable experiences in problem-solving, rich play, and collaboration. And you'll hear the term "rich play" all throughout this presentation because it is the core of preschool. We had the opportunity to visit some really wonderful high-quality pre-K programs. One classroom was studying the arts. And the students had the opportunity to collaborate to engineer an igloo. And I tell you, it was fantastic. They had to work together, they had to problem-solve, they, the teacher, with the teacher's support, they created this tutorial how-to. And it was step-by-step of how the students actually put together this igloo. And it was really, it was fantastic. And I write how-tos in first grade. And it really, like, it was close to blowing the seventh bar. It was fabulous. So the main emphasis of this is that the children are collaborating and they are working together.
Here again, sorry.
So pre-K, this is also something that we really noticed a trend through most of the high-quality programs that we did visit. The children have the opportunity to self-regulate. And this is really important for transitions and for students, for brain breaks, who are allowed to move and to get up. So actually, I could use this one right now, because I'm a little...
I use it when I'm doing stuff. So let's do it together.
Okay. So what the children do is they visualize, or they have actually a picture, and I think you had it in your packet as well. So basically, it's a picture of a flower and there's a candle.
It's in the folder, oh, left-hand side.
So there's a picture of a flower and there's a picture of a candle. So the students have to actually smell the flower, so they're taking in their deep breath and then they're letting it up to blow out the candle. And it does also, it helps the body relax, it helps the mind relax, it gets you ready to really, to focus and get ready for the next task. Also through amusement, through music, through rhyme, through movement breaks, the students learn to attend for longer periods of time.
Research has shown that toddlers who attended high-quality preschool have fewer behavior problems throughout their lives compared to toddlers that attended lower-quality preschool. This may be attributed to the fact that toddlers were exposed into self-regulation skills and communication skills prior to entering kindergarten. Children have more advanced math and language skills and come to school knowing how school works. Students build expectations, expectations of schools, the transition, and the routines.
So again, the play-based part of the curriculum is really the soul of it, of the high-quality education. It also laid a strong foundation for science, technology, engineering, and math. And here we also, in Roundville Central, we include art and music. That's what we would include.
Just going to provide a little information on student achievement related to pre-K. In the East School data, we track students' pre-K experience either as a part of universal pre-K. We indicate if they attended pre-K with a private provider. We indicate if we have no information, they didn't provide information about their pre-K experience or lack of, or that they have no formal pre-K experience. So we just pulled as a sample, we picked, pulled the end-of-year first-grade report cards for all of last spring's first graders. So all of the first graders who finished in June two thousand sixteen, we pulled their report cards. And we looked at the percentage of threes and fours earned versus the percentage of ones and twos earned. So the orange bars that you see are the percentage of threes and fours earned by students in each category. The blue bars show the percentage of ones and twos earned by students in each category. So it's clearly that by, at the end of first grade, we are seeing a difference in the performance of our students who participated in pre-K, whether it was UPK or a private provider, versus those who did not participate in pre-K.
What would a high-quality pre-K look like? Highly qualified, bested Roundville Central teachers who experienced early childhood grades.
It would look like classrooms that focus on social and emotional development, physical development, academics, and again, that rich play. The rich play would be accessible to students as the classroom would have a wide range of choices and possibilities where children could invent and extend their own role-playing, their movement, and their natural and manually materials.
It would be a safe and nurturing environment between teachers and families where children feel successful and supported. Families to be involved with the activity and understand how much school can support their child's learning.
And again, high-quality classrooms would have essential teaching. And this actually came up in a lot of the research that we did conduct together and on the site visits as well. The planning of curriculum with the targeted centers that were thoughtful and purposeful. So for example, we're going to show you a little, that's what Teresa said.
With a back...
That's what I did. So this actually happened in one of the classes I did, sir. The teacher, she was doing a lesson on the letter J. So the students elicited this sound and they were practicing this sound, so they created jets. Okay, so I had a little help engineering my jet from a teacher. But they learned J, so they had to practice, so their gross motor skills, they were throwing. And then they were eliciting this sound as they were the airplanes and they said, "Junk, junk." So I'm going to try and hit my target, so I have to distinguish between the J and the C. So not only are they throwing, they're eliciting the sound, but they're also differentiating between the appropriate letter, that and that.
There's a J and a C.
There's a J and a C.
I'm going to try. Not trying to fall down, I'm trying to handle it, sorry. I'm getting far off my head. That was pretty close. So we give it to you.
Okay. But it's interesting because, and then another sensor for J, at another table, the teacher had a thing of jelly beans and a ten-prime. And the students were practicing their one-to-one correspondence, counting, counting out the numbers, counting out the jelly beans, holding on to the number, which is all part of what we do at kindergarten, Kathy Richardson. They have to count out the set, they have to count out the quantity, they have to hold on to that number. So they really were laying the foundation for what we do in school.
And they use that ten-prime.
Oh, yes, which I use today in my first grade class.
So it's something that we get used to with pre-K, always kindergarten, first grade, so something that wouldn't be new to them.
That would be new to them, a kid that now went in preschool, but then would build on.
And also, I would like to add on that all these centers are differentiated. The teachers are at each center, progress monitoring, they have checklists, they're analyzing the data, they're claiming goals. And it's not only academic, but they're looking at the social piece too, and the student transition, any type of notes, and that's how they plan their lessons.
Another thing that we observed in the classroom was the use of multisensory teaching strategies. So for example, the students were learning the letter S. So they had different tactile materials for the letter S. Let's say they had spaghetti, they had sand, they had tactile letters, so they had the sand tray, they're forming the letter S, making the sound, building with spaghetti. They would be slithering on the floor like a snake, making the sound. So you're really incorporating all the senses into that experience, which makes it fun, which adds that element of, again, that rich play for the students. And the students are immersed in that letter through their everyday participation in class. Really wonderful.
There's hands-on, hands-on learning for exploration in various centers like Home Living and Design Center, which all would have been opportunities for rich questioning, which we had PD, thank you, Mrs. Joss. I'll get observed. Okay, so. So an example would be, a classroom, a classroom may be studying hibernation. So a teacher might pass around ice cubes for the children to explore. And then the teacher, my name is Lam Crisco, a bottle in hand, and then pass the ice cube around and place it on top of the hand. At this point, the students will share their findings of the experience, the experience of a very remembering Crisco act like a deliverer of bats.
Thank you, Sarah. So why should we have pre-K in Roundville Central? We believe this early learning program will draw families back to Roundville Central and bring new families into the district.
We believe it will foster a bounty bond and create a partnership with families who need it.
We believe it will increase access to high-quality pre-K. Since more preschools have closed in our district, in our local area.
We believe Roundville Central School District will highlight our commitment to educate for personal excellence and promote our reputation as innovative, top-performing school districts.
We know the bridge between pre-K and kindergarten is stronger with the pre-K in the building. The pre-K teachers would have the kindergarten teachers and vice-직자 who they do there before each other and to help each other.
Teachers will have access to building-based support such as the in-house teachers, the speech colleges, the occupational therapists, social workers, letters and math specialists.
Students will have access to RBS and EEP.
We know that Roundville Central has a very loved teacher fraternity, unlike some of the community-based organizations, and Roundville Central teachers are bested.
And lastly, there will be increased professional development opportunities as we value and seek out these opportunities.
So I'm going to talk, I'm going to change gears a little bit and talk a little bit about our funding. So I mentioned earlier that our current pre-K placements are all done through funded programs. The first one, one of those I mentioned was the full-day grant, that's for twenty students, that's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the state. Of that two-hundred thousand, currently seven thousand per student goes to our pre-K provider. Two thousand dollars per student goes to a minority woman business-owned enterprise, that is a grant requirement. And so for us, that is done through suppliers. We have a supplier that our pre-K providers use, that is a licensed minority-owned business-owned enterprise. And then a thousand dollars goes to Childcare Resources. For our half-day UPK students, and this is whether we're talking about the ninety-five students that are in the initial state grant or the additional students we paid for through Title I. Currently, twenty-four hundred dollars per student goes to the pre-K provider and three hundred dollars per student goes to Childcare Resources. I mentioned earlier about the additional resources, this is three hundred dollars per qualifying student through Title I. And those, again, are students who may still need language support who didn't qualify in the twenty-something students for their volunteer. So when we think about that funding. When we think about that funding and look at the cost of a class in Roundville Central, we have two scenarios. So we have a big half-day class and a full-day class. I'm going to talk about the half-day class first. The other side, here, that is thirty-six students, because it's eighteen students in the morning section and it's eighteen students in the afternoon section. So that's where the thirty-six students comes from, because they're each going for a half-day. So it's eighteen in the morning, eighteen in the afternoon, and then one teacher and one EEP. The grant funding would provide a useless... The grant funding would provide a $6,000 towards that. The staff expense, this includes benefits, this is not just salary, this is salary plus benefits. For a Brown Central teacher and a Brown Central EEP, that's $194,000. And so beyond the funding that comes from the grant, the district would need to include $108,000 per class from the district budget. That's if we run a half-day class. For a full-day class, which remember the full-day program was 20 students, but if you'll also recall, if we put 20 students in, we have to put two eights. So if we keep it at 18 students, the allotment for the full day is a bigger, much higher, is more than double what the half-day is. And so that allotment we would get is $126,000. The teacher and EEP cost is the same, and so the difference would be a $68,605. I will say that we can only run one class at this cost, because the grant only covers 20 students. So if we have 18 in this class, we don't have any funding to run another one. The funding would have to come from another source. So a little bit about the UPK timeline, this is important to know, just because in terms of planning, if we are going to move forward with this, we do need to accommodate enough time. So the UPK process starts in late January, Childcare Resources releases the UPK applications. In February, Childcare Resources hosts their information sessions throughout the county. And as I mentioned earlier, this has historically included one at Connor. At the end of March, the UPK applications are due to Childcare Resources. During April and May, there's a review of the applications, make sure everything's ordered, residency, immunizations, all those things. And the lottery takes place. The purchases are notified in late May on lottery degree results for both full and half-day. And then over the summer, we determine Title I slots. And that's why some people don't get notified until the summer. Sometimes they get waitlisted when they find out in May, and then they get notified in July or August, oh, now we have an opening for you. And that's how we're able, as I said, over the last three years, to offer everybody a spot. Sometimes it doesn't happen in May, and takes over the summer for that to happen. So this timeline is important, because the process for Childcare Resources starts in late January. So, and our budget process also starts in the winter. So our timeline, we're really looking like we would need to know in November if we're planning for this. If we're gonna do something related to pre-K, we would need to really know by November. Just some background information, historically in Brown County, when UPK first started, more Brown did run their own UPK. They ran that program for four or five years. It's now discontinued, and they use Childcare Resources. San Orange Town ran a early childhood program, which was an integrated program for special ed and general ed students. That's also been discontinued, and they use Childcare Resources. Nanuet currently has a community-based organization that runs a UPK site in one of their moments. So they're not Nanuet employees, they're employees of the community-based organization that runs this space. Similarly, our YDing St. Louis program takes place at St. Louis Elementary School, but it's a community-based organization using RBS. In Clarkstown, Clarkstown has their own childcare facility. It's not a pre-K, it is literally a childcare, infants can go there. It is specifically developed and embedded, their employees, as part of their contract, and it's B-based, and it does not participate in UEP. It's a different, just a different function and structure. So some of the questions and considerations that have come up in our conversations about what, you know, thinking about bringing pre-K into Brown Central, one question is, will it increase overall pre-K enrollment? Will it get 65% to a higher number? You know, we've made progress getting from 40% of our kids in pre-K to getting 60% in pre-K. Will it increase it? We don't know, that's something we'll have to find out. Will it increase interest for young families to choose Brown Central? We'd like to believe it will, we don't have any evidence to say that it will. Can, this is a question, can Title I months be used if the program is located at a school other than our become, our St. Louis? We think it can, but we don't know that for sure. Will lack of transportation be an impediment? That we know is an issue, particularly in our full-day program. We know that transportation is an issue. If you go all the way back to our full-day chart, you will see that the students that are in our full-day program are, for the most part, in programs that are accessible to John Conover. They're at Kidnapped Care, they're Sacred Heart, and Lion's Daughter. So that is something we want to keep in mind. And then what will be the impact, if we were to offer pre-K in our buildings, what would be the impact to our community-based organizations, which we have wonderful relationships with? So in terms of next stats, we're sort of have some thinking for you to do. We could stay with the stat as well. Right now, we are providing pre-kindergarten services through our CBOs for every child who's applying. We've been able to do that for the last three years. Option two, we look at maximizing our grant funding to support district classes. And what this would mean was some students would still be in CBOs, some would be in the district, but we would maximize that grant funding from that chart I showed you where the full-day class was $68,000 out of the operating budget, the half-day class is $108,000. And I say three to four classes max here, because then we start to top out of the 95 plus the Title I money. So that's gonna be somewhere in the three to four class range of where we would have that support of people using the grant monies. And then option three is to look and say, you know what? We think pre-K is amazing, we want to maximize the availability of pre-K for every child. We want to guarantee every child with a spot, we're done with the lottery. And that would involve some students in CBOs, because some people would still choose. Some people remember 60% use wraparound care, which means did not use wraparound care, which means 40% did. It's not, not every parent can drop their kid off for two and a half hours and have somewhere for the child to go the rest of the day. So we would still have families who choose not to send their child here, because they have other needs in their family. And so in option three, where we maximize the availability, we guarantee a spot for every child. And for any classes that go beyond the amount that we can use of grant funding, the district will be responsible for the full operating cost, cost of those classes.
Thank you. Any board members have questions?
There's a lot of suggestions.
Yeah. We can have questions later, so.
I just have a clarifying question on one of the first slide, the UPK participation. We showed the years of UPK applicants and the percentage of kindergarteners. Am I interpreting this correctly, that each one of those UPK applicants went into the kindergarten, and that's why you're saying 64% are enrolled?
Yeah.
So there are UPKs that went to other districts, who went to other kindergartens?
In fact, we just started with grade one data. So the grade one were in pre-K in 2013, 14. And when we went and cross-listed those, we found that it was... Twenty-three. Twenty-three of these 114 are not currently in our district. Some of them left after pre-K, some left after kindergarten, some just left this summer.
Okay, so those percentages are not necessarily...
They are not. They are not the same children. So in 2000, let's just be last year. In 2015, 16, we had 143 kids apply for UPK and get it. This year, we have 220 kids in kindergarten. Some of these 220 are some of these 143, but not necessarily all of them.
So a couple of things. There was one phrase that I missed the content, like the number of centers, some centers have closed.
Four.
Four centers have closed.
In the last several years, you wanna open a...
What locations were there?
Um, Montawa Jewish Center, um, Rockville Hill, Roddy Hill, here, Cameron, and Temple Beta.
Because of enrollment?
Some, some were, um, like Aaron Angels, for example, it was a woman trying to, she wanted to get any money out of it. So it was like she had a daycare facility, and then she decided to do pre-K. That's where my child went, and then she couldn't stand, was somewhat operating.
Profitable.
Was a problem at the same time.
The UPK site, the $2,700 per student hasn't changed in the 19 years of the UPK program?
So there's no financial incentive?
Right, not profitable.
Okay, and my other question was, I'm just trying to make sure I'm doing this, because that will really determine how we decide on this. If we were to run the half-day, which seems to be financially, you know, rewarding in terms of grant money, would we boss those kids to daycare?
That's an operational decision that, like I mentioned earlier, we're sort of providing a vision without any operational details. Transportation would be an additional cost, and it would not be on the school's other kids' safety because of time, more than anything, because they're going home after a half-hour. But it is an operational detail, which we have not discussed.
It's designed as a...
It is not, transportation is not included in any of the propositions.
So I think we need to account for it. Okay, thank you.
David?
Matt? The question, the 220 in your last example, that is not, that's not completely the same with the 143, right?
Right, so this 220 is the number of students we had registered for kindergarten, I think it was two weeks ago, it might be slightly different now. But the 143 is the number of kids who were in pre-K last year.
Right. Do we have the data for the, for the actual kindergarten enrollment and what percentage of those went to universal pre-K? Because if I'm reading this right, the 65% is just, you know, the applicants, participants, divided by the enrollment, but you said not necessarily the same kids.
A parent could have chosen after pre-K, they might have moved, they might have chosen to send their child to private school. Both of those are possible scenarios. I don't have it for this one.
I was just curious if the district has the data for the actual enrolled students in kindergarten?
I don't, I did look at it before today, it's in East School Day.
Okay, and then on the very last question. The third option, to maximize availability, would that, I mean, and I realize this is not operational, but is the vision to provide half-day, full-day, you know, a combination, you know, one or the other? What is the vision?
I think the decision needs to be made, is it part of beneficial to offer half-day to everyone or as many children as possible? Or is it focused on full-day for maybe students who have higher needs? That's a decision that would have to be made, it's not well-end of the making.
I mean, it's, again, you gotta tell me this is something feasible, but offering the half-day in one location and a full-day at another location? I don't know what kind of needs are there, you know, needs are there in the district, but that, I think that could be considered.
It's, everything's on the table at this point, so it hasn't eliminated us in a certain way.
David?
I, just one quick question, the last, this last slide, the second one. So it says half-day class, K and P, right?
Right.
$180,000. But three or four classes, so is it 180 times three or four?
Right, so if we offered one section of pre-K, and it was an AMP, and we maximized our grant funding, it would cost the district $8,000 of the operating budget. If we ran two classes, each one would cost $180,000.
Right.
If we got, I may have the number, like, we're not gonna get there, we don't have this many kids, but if we got to 10 classes, after somewhere around the fourth class, we run, we run out of grant funding. And so it would rent, so anything beyond that would be out of the operational logic.
But it's 180 per class?
Yes.
For an A.
No, it's for the deck. It's 180 for the deck. Because it's one teacher and one A is teaching.
All right. Sorry, oddly formulated question. Very young, no, no, no. So you mentioned that these kids would have the opportunity to benefit from having various secret specialists attending their needs. That's something that we would need to budget for in the future, such that making sure that we had, that these specialists had enough time to communicate both to UPK students as well as to the current students?
That's an operational piece that we would have to determine if that's wanting to take place or not. It is not a requirement for pre-K students to have art, music, or gym with a specialist. It is an opportunity. We do unfortunately know we have declining enrollment in our buildings, and the declining enrollment could provide some opportunities that just appear in the schedule because of declining enrollment. But that is ultimately a decision we would think.
I was thinking of it first, like, would people have enough time to provide their attention? And then, but then, as I'm thinking about this, children that then qualify for services would get funding through that?
They would get through the CPSC. Any child who gets something through CPSC would still get it through CPSC.
Right, it's just that they could utilize some of the specialists that work in house, understand, to get that.
That's good.
And so the teachers support, when teachers talk to teachers, it might not necessarily be like a push-in in the classroom. It just could be us collaborating, okay, I have these students who exhibit such and such. And then what are your tests, you know, be that happening for these?
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you again. Okay, so we are at the... We are at the... Point 01, is it public participation? Public participation as the end-school district business. This session will last an hour. Agreements for persons, please step up to the mic, state your name, school affiliation, not necessarily address, but school affiliation. And again, no comments would affect any student, staff, teacher, or otherwise, resort to policy that I've been agreeing for. Okay, so you've done, I'll close that portion of reading. So we're tense, closing comments?
Yeah, just to give the board a preview of what's to come in the next meeting, we'll have an extensive renovation report of projects that we've gone over and worked on during the summer, and maybe a preview a little bit about what we're looking at during the course of this year. Secondly, will be the beginning of our comprehensive school improvement plans. We'll begin with the high school. And as you might see on our website, the high school has once again been made a reward school, and it's a prestigious honor, so congratulations to the high school. But we'll give PACT the award at that time. And then also, the PPS department will make a report, and part of that will be the services that we provide, but also the costs, and taking a look at those expenditures in greater detail. So some of the, you know, when we look at our budget, some of the reference that we typically begin at in January, that's true, but we also have some reports along the way. Like the PPS report, we'll be talking about the renovations, we'll have the athletic expenditure report on November 1st. So some of these reports that we're letting out will give you kind of a better context in terms of the numbers and the costs of some of our programs. I just want to give you a heads-up, that we'll have these three fairly significant reports, and I would anticipate 10 to 20 minutes for each one of those three reports. And I know you have a discussion item that I think we'll take... And I know you have a discussion item that I think will take probably the sense of amount of time in the next meeting as well.